Brainerd City Council meeting, and we'll start with roll call.
How good Lambert? Lambert? Stoner?
Here.
Pritchett?
Here.
Bevins?
Here.
W Erickson? I see Wayne is present. T Erickson?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
And Bedeau?
Here.
Okay, that brings us to the next item, which is the approval of the agenda. I think you all saw the Community Development Director wanted us to add an item. And perhaps we might want to move this dog hearing to the beginning of the meeting, but that's up to you, but I'm ready for a motion.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Bevins?
I move that we approve the agenda, moving the dog hearing up to, where are we here? To the first item in new business. Or, or do you want to move it before the audit presentation, Mr. Chair?
I think before the audit, just get it done.
Before the audit, and then adding the food truck moratorium to the Safety and Public Works Agenda, item number four, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by Bevins, a second by Pritchett, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Lambert? Stoner?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes.
W Erickson?
Jan Lambert?
Has joined the meeting.
T Erickson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
And Bedeau?
No. That motion carries. Jan, welcome to the meeting. We just approved the agenda.
I'm so sorry, I'm having trouble. Thank you, Gabe.
No problem. We're moving on to number four, which is the consent calendar. Notice to public, all matters listed are considered routine by the council, and will all be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the time the council votes on the motion to be adopted by roll call.
Move to adopt.
Second.
By Bevins, second by Pritchett, to adopt a consent calendar, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Lambert?
Yes.
Stoner?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes.
W Erickson? T Erickson?
Yes.
And Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries. That brings us to item number five, Community Member of the Month. Taking this.
Dave, are you going to take it, or do you want me to, or do you want both?
So what I'd like to do with this is have Jennifer introduce them, and then seeing as you were the one to nominate, then we'll have you speak as well. But let's let Jennifer introduce it, just so we have a process when we get these.
Okay, sounds good. Jennifer, introduce it.
You bet. So, Mr. Chair, and really what I will do is ask Jan to speak. Tammy Erbitowski has been nominated as the Community Member of the Month. She has been many years of service to the Brainerd community through her volunteer service at the Mid-Soda Women's Center. And with that, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'd like to turn it over to Alderman Lambert.
Oh, thank you. I know, Jennifer, I've worked with her quite a few times with the VFW. She's very conscientious, and if you-
Robert O'Brien?
Has joined the meeting.
If you ever want to see Energized Bunny in person, just look at Jennifer. She deserves this, and I congratulate her on that. And Shannon can talk more about the Women's Center.
Okay, Mayor Bedeau, do you want to add anything to that?
No, I just want to say that I'm glad that we're getting this program back up and running. I look forward to being able to present these in person. You know, it's a little informal and a little impersonal to do it over WebEx like this, but I just want to say that this is another fantastic candidate. Tammy, we're so glad to be able to select you as the Community Member of the Month.
Thank you, Mayor. Tammy, do you have anything to say?
Yes, I do. I want to thank you, Mayor Dave, and City Council, and Jan Lambert, for this time to take this time to recognize my volunteer efforts that mean everything to me throughout my life of volunteering. Is my, I have a big heart, and I just love the Women's Center. They're like my, they are my family. And I am just very proud to be volunteering on more community projects and events to raise awareness for domestic abuse awareness. And I wouldn't be here today without support and Jan Lambert that I've done some projects with through the VFW. The Marines of Foreign Wars are a big part of my life, and I am so grateful to our brave men and soldiers and women. And if I start crying, it's because I'm just touched to have this honor to be recognized for my volunteering efforts as well, along with the Women's Center. And thank you for taking the time to consider me as a proud volunteer, a Community Member of the Month. Very touched and very moved, and I just feel blessed, and thank you, Jan Lambert. That we'll be talking, or be doing some more projects, and I'm getting ready to spear up one more project of the pandemic next week. I've been working very hard with the community, I'm almost done here. Everyone to get out there, and if they're able to donate blood, because there's such a huge demand for it, this really means a lot to all the blood demand of the American Red Cross next week. I'm giving it my all to make awareness of this and whatnot, to give back to our community and to those that are in need of other health-related issues too as well during this pandemic. So thank you again for touching my heart, and this is my home community of, I've lived around the Brainerd, and I graduated at Brainerd High School. And I've lived around here since I was 12 years old. I moved up from the cities when I was a kid, and I've been volunteering the Women's Center for a number of years on many projects and whatnot. And I want to thank you all for taking the time to recognize me and Community Member of the Month, and Mayor Dave too again, and all of you City Council members. Thank you for all the great community service that you do to provide for our community and help make it safe and a better place to live around the Brainerd Lakes area. Thank you.
Mayor Bedeau?
Just thank you very much, Tammy. It means a lot. These are, this is an award that we want to make sure is going out to the people that are doing the type of stuff you're doing, and it really means a lot for us to be able to present that. We want to be able to congratulate and thank people in the community, and that's exactly what this award is for. So, and if anybody else out there who is listening or is catching this later on, if you're interested in nominating somebody for Community Member of the Month, you can do so on our website or by contacting City Hall, and then you too can have this glorious moment like Tammy.
Thank you, Mayor, and congratulations, Tammy, and thank you for everything you do for our community and Women's Center and VFW and even Blood Drive, so thank you. Let's move on to the next item on the agenda, which is, we moved up, which is the dangerous dog hearing. So Joe, will you run us through the process here?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So the process is simply this. The animal at issue here, a dog named Hank, was determined to be dangerous by order of the Animal Control Officer, Mr. O'Brien. And the owner of the animal has decided to appeal that determination. So tonight, we have the appeal before the City Council, because it is an appeal by the owner. The owner has the right to make a statement, to present whatever evidence she finds helpful to her case, subject to the council's right to maintain procedure. And then once the owner's case is finished, the Animal Control Officer has an opportunity to rebut those comments. And following that, the council will have to make a determination based upon what they've heard as whether this animal is in fact a dangerous dog as that term is defined under city code and state law. And if they do find that the dog is dangerous, then we will move on to the discussion about the conditions to be imposed upon the animal.
Sure. I know we've heard this definition a few times, but for the benefit of those who haven't, Mr. Langill, could you please read for us what the definition of a dangerous dog is under Minnesota law?
Sure. A dangerous dog means any dog that is without provocation inflicted substantial bodily harm on a human being on public or private property. There's a couple other subparts to that, but they do not, well, let me take it back. The subpart three says, has been found potentially dangerous, and after the owner has noticed that the dog is potentially dangerous, the dog aggressively bites, attacks, or endangers the safety of humans or domestic animals. I bring up that subset as well, because I believe there's, this particular animal was declared potentially dangerous by Crow Wing County some years ago. So that's the definition of dangerous dog.
Alderman Bevins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. May I ask a question of Attorney Langill?
Absolutely.
Mr. Attorney Langill, I see the address for this, yes, is outside of the city of Brainerd. Do you have any concern that we can't rule on this?
Alderman Bevins, the animal was, as I understand it, not residing, if you will, at that address. That is an address where it once was kept, but at the time, it was kept in an apartment within the city of Brainerd. And the incident that gave rise to this designation occurred at that apartment within the city of Brainerd.
So the, so the incident occurred here, but is the dog, and I realize that dogs can't have residence, Attorney Langill, but my petition says 18547 Hartley Lake Road. I Googled that. That's outside the city of Brainerd. And I know that, I mean, if you say we can proceed, I'm all for that. I'm concerned that that, that the incident may have happened, but the residence is not, I see no residence at an apartment in the city of Brainerd listed on the request for hearing. Can you clarify that residence?
My understanding, and they have to get the Mr. O'Brien involved in this, but my understanding is that the dog owner was living in an apartment inside the city of Brainerd at the time that this occurred.
Okay. So they've moved.
I believe that that Hartley Lake Road address, if I'm not mistaken, is the address of her ex-husband.
Oh, okay, all right. I see another with a different address. Okay.
All right, that's, you're satisfied, Alderman Bevins?
Yes, I just wanted to make sure.
Yep. So I think with that, any other questions from the council before we proceed to hear the dog owner's reasonings as to why the designation is wrong? No other questions? I will open it up. Brittany, the floor is yours. Go ahead and present your case to us.
Hi, so there's quite a few things that aren't accurate in this report. For one, it was not my son that, actually, I don't even know where to start, because the potentially dangerous dog, that was, Hank never jumped on anybody or anything, and nobody got bit, nobody got hurt by any means at all. The officer even said he didn't want to violate the law. Done it. So then, when this all happened, Mike says that he got a call from Florida Department. I just want to clarify that when he couldn't get a hold, the number that he has listed on there is not my number, and that Hank stayed in quarantine in Florida for the full 10 days. And I wasn't able to get him, get him free and clear. They did not tell me I needed to follow up with Animal Control up here at all. And then when I got back home and this incident occurred, Hank, this was not unprovoked, like he came out of nowhere and just bit me. I had my friend kid over to our house, and he's squealing and kind of like fake crying, and I could, I noticed Hank getting nervous about it, so I just directed him to the bedroom, and he thought I was getting after the child that my son, there was an outgoing, going on that is stated in this report. And after it happened, in the heat of the moment, put him down, but not immediately. I would definitely, like, I don't, um, sorry. Not really following his time here, but I just, he is now at Bobinsky, or Hart, wasn't able to even touch him or anything like that, it did in the report, and aggressive behavior, which kind of just makes me wonder what had, went on, you know, at Hart, or why nobody was able to, you know, calmly approach him, because he's not, that's not who he is. I've had him since he's a puppy. He's been around kids, he's been around kids his whole life, and I just think that he needs to be in a home where
Please.
Mr. Chair, I wonder if that's Dan?
Hello?
Let's mute Jan for now. I'm just having trouble hearing Brittany, and I don't know where the noise is coming from. Go ahead, Brittany.
I'm not sure, I guess. What else to say? You know, be followed up with care, and I don't, I would never want anybody to be hurt, but I am in Ski Foundation, seeing a behavioral dog, I think therapist or trainer, whatever you call him, and he is getting neutered on Saturday. Unprovoked, or and this would be something unprovoked.
Okay, Brittany, so there was, we had a dog hearing recently, and there was some confusion with the dog owner on how much they would get to speak. And I just want to let you know that anything you want the council to know, now is your time to tell us. We aren't going to give the floor back to you, so anything you think we need to know, I just want to make sure you have the opportunity to let us know.
Think where he will be staying at that 18547 Hartley Lake Road, just to clarify as well. If, um, all right, yeah.
Okay, and that's, that's all you have to offer us tonight, Brittany?
Guess that I'm missing?
I am going, I am going to, I am going to give Melissa three minutes to speak after you are done.
Okay. I believe that that's it. I just want to emphasize, I know Hart, Hart and Mike both make it sound like he's very, really, he's not, and he hasn't any, any aggression. While he's so I just attack, or isn't, or, and then he's not even a dog that attacks, really, it just was a bad situation that I should not have put my dog back 1,500 miles and you know, hired to test, and I think that had a lot to do with state of mind, I guess.
Okay, I have one question, Brittany. You've mentioned a couple times that, that it wasn't unprovoked, which makes me think it was, the dog was provoked to bite a human. How was the dog provoked?
It was provoked by the screaming and fake crying after the child to stop doing that, and he wasn't got a little ADHD, and he wasn't, I don't know, I just just directed him into the bedroom, and that's when that I was maybe getting after the kid, because he's protective of his kids. Him are really best friends, he would never, ever of him at all.
Okay, thank you, Brittany. I want the council to be here. Hearing nothing, we will close that, and then I will go to Melissa, and Melissa, I'll give you three minutes to, just so the council is aware, Melissa has asked to address the council. She is a dog advocate, and I said she could have a few minutes, because she may be able to provide value here. So go ahead, Melissa.
Thank you, Gabe. Actually, I'm an advocate for people whose pets are declared dangerous, potentially dangerous or destructive. And in this case, this, this dog did bite his owner. He was unprovoked. I will point out that the dog was declared potentially dangerous outside of Brainerd, and then declared dangerous. And in the law, it says, I think a guy, one of your council members brought this up, he was declared dangerous inside the city of Brainerd, but that attack was provoked. So if you follow the steps, and a dog is declared potentially dangerous, you can for any reason then declare him dangerous after that, provoked or unprovoked. In this case, I just want to point out, he was declared potentially dangerous outside of Brainerd, and then declared dangerous inside of Brainerd after a provoked attack. And, you know, I, I think that the bite was severe. The owner does not want her dog euthanized. She wants to keep him. She has a plan for the dog to live in a more stable home outside of Brainerd with her ex-husband, because that's who she originally got him with. And my aim is to help her be compliant with dangerous dog laws if you decide to deem him dangerous, declare him dangerous. And that would be, you know, it's reasonable, like you have to have a proper enclosure, you have to have a muzzle on the dog when he's outside. You have to have certain, I think you have to have, maybe not in the city of Brainerd, but you should have certain insurance, $300,000 liability insurance. But my aim is to get him into training as well, and have him reevaluated after six months or a year, depending on how he does in training. But I think that this dog was provoked. He had just been on a 1,500-mile road trip. He was in a home with a screaming child. The owner tried to remove the dog from the situation, it upset the dog, and the dog bit her. So the dog did have a bite incident down in Florida. Nobody was hurt. Even though in this report, which we talked about, Brittany and I talked about, there are a lot of inaccuracies in here. And one of them was from her stepfather. He was nipped at, not bitten, no skin broken, but, you know, he thinks the dog is dangerous. Anyhow, my aim is to help her be compliant and to help her keep her dog. And we do have a plan for that dog.
Thank you. Thank you for providing resources to people who need it. With that, I guess it goes on to Mike O'Brien to address all of this.
Can you guys hear me?
I can.
Thanks, and thanks again. To clarify Alderman Bevins' comment about, you know, that she has a Hartley Lake address. Joe Langill was right. She is now living inside the city limits on Mill Avenue, and her driver's license still says Hartley Lake Road or whatever, and that's where her ex-husband Rick lives. But the dog was living in Brainerd at the time, on Mill Avenue, Northeast Brainerd, and that's where this bite had occurred. I'm assuming you guys all read the report I wrote. We definitely stand behind that report. And I, when we first started investigating this, we received a call that there was a dog bite. I went there, the ambulance was just leaving with Brittany at the time, and her live-in boyfriend Lee was there, and told me dog was upstairs, he had bit her pretty bad in the arm, and we went up to secure the dog, and I was told dispatch told me that the owner requested us to take the dog and euthanize it, and per state law, we're going to hold the dog in a bite hole or whatever. We weren't able to get the dog under control. Lee was able to help me finally, and we were able to get a catch pole on him. He was really agitated. Brought him to the shelter, got him checked in and everything, and he was still pretty aggressive. I wasn't able to get his, normally we would take his collar and stuff like that off. We weren't able to get that off, so I just put him in the bite hole kennels, and then went to the hospital and talked with Brittany. And again, there she reiterated that she wanted him euthanized, and I took some pictures of the bites. You guys got those. That was fairly substantial. It was 31 separate puncture wounds, required surgery to repair. And then she told me a little bit about the story in Florida. I was able to speak to her stepdad, and he told me his skin was broken. Now, he's in Florida. I didn't go down there and interview him or anything. I talked to him on the phone. He definitely, you know, there was some sort of an altercation. He was taking Brittany's keys out of her car, and the dog bit him. And you guys have the report from Florida. It also states that it bit Brittany in both arms, the stomach, and it says something about possible other areas or something. I spoke with them in Florida. They were going to investigate it as a potentially dangerous dog. Then she moved back here. They called me before she moved and asked if we would do the follow-up on the bite hole for them. And I was unable to get a hold of, hold of them, or hold Brittany during that process. And then on the 29th, I got this call. So during the investigation, we found out that the dog, when it was living on the Hartley Lake Road address, was labeled a potentially dangerous dog by the Crow Wing County Sheriff's Office. You have that report as well. When I met with Brittany, two days after her bite, we had declared it a potentially, or a dangerous dog, because, you know, without provocation on said date, the dog inflicted substantial bodily harm. Under the Dangerous Dog statutes, provocation means a reasonable adult would assume this activity, I'm paraphrasing here, but a reasonable adult would assume whatever the provocation is could result in a dog attacking or biting a human being. And I would say that a crying child is probably not provocation, and if it is, that's alarming a little bit, I think, because kids cry. Once we found out that the dog was already labeled a potentially dangerous, we amended that report to, to the third, third mark on the above date. After said dog had been found to be potentially dangerous, and the owner was duly notified, said dog aggressively bit, attacked, or endangered the safety of humans or domestic animals, and obviously that had happened. This whole process, when Brittany said she wanted to contest it, you know, I kind of walked her through on what she needed to do, and she did that right away properly. And she said her plan was to move it out to the Hartley Lake Road address, to this Rick Anderson's house. And I spoke with him on the 10th of July, and he said, at that point in time, he may have changed his mind, I don't know, but at that point in time, he said, no, he was not taking this dog back. I haven't talked to him since then, so I don't know. She's saying now that's where the dog's going to go. I don't know that to be true or not. All I know is when I talked to him- I don't know that to be true or not. All I know is when I talked to him on the 10th, he was not going to take the dog. These declarations follow the dog throughout the state. If they move it to within a Brainerd address but outside the city limits, the only thing changes is we wouldn't be the ones, you know, following up and investigating. It would be a Crow Wing County issue, but this designation follows the dog statewide. Other than that, I mean, you guys have the report. Do you have any questions?
You know, does anybody have any questions? If not. Doesn't look like it.
It stated that the dog was supposed to have been microchipped after one of the incidences. Was the dog ever microchipped?
I didn't have anything from that. That was a Crow Wing County issue I have on the report and that's a state law. If your dog is labeled potentially dangerous, you have 14 days to microchip it. I didn't see any paperwork come through that said it had a microchip. It may have, it may not have. I don't know.
Okay. See no more questions. I'll. Just Joe, what's the next step here? We've heard the testimony from both sides and now we need to make a determination.
That is correct. And again, it goes back to the definition of dangerous dog. And as Mr. Brian just pointed out, and as I think Ms. Knar pointed out. Dangerous dog definition is due to different parts of it that could apply here. Ones without provocation and inflicted substantial bodily harm. And then the other one is if a dog is been found to be potentially dangerous. And after the owner has noticed the dog is potentially dangerous, the dog then aggressively bites, attacks and dangers the safety of humans. So the two different bases, alternative bases for finding that the dog is a dangerous dog. Issue for the council.
Okay, that is the issue before us. Does somebody have a motion? Alderman Pritchett.
I think due to the fact that the dog was categorized as potentially dangerous and then bit someone, I would move to classify this as a dangerous dog.
Lambert, second.
We have a motion by Pritchett, a second by Lambert. Any discussion? And this is just on declaring it a dangerous dog. This isn't on what we're, what conditions we're. Going to recommend. Is there any discussion on the motion to affirm the dangerous dog? Jan?
Mr. Chair, if I may. In here on our reports, it shows also the owner had wanted the dog euthanized. Quite a few times and then had changed your name or changed your mind. I think that's significant in the fact that she was concerned also. And some of the degree of the degree of the injury and the fact that child was involved. I do, I do believe this dog fits that category. Thank you.
Thank you, Jan. I also agree with the motion. I think it, I think it's apparent it fits the category that it was already declared potentially dangerous and then it bit somebody. That did happen. And then even going further to the provocation. I mean, I have two young boys and all they do is yell and run around and fake cry. So I just don't think that a reasonable adult would think that that would cause a dog to bite somebody. So I would think under, under both counts, really, it could be classified as dangerous. Any other discussion? Kevin?
I'll just make the comment. When you look at the injuries that required surgery in an ambulance ride, that speaks for itself for a dog. If I had a dog like that, it would be gone. And just the idea that you put that young child in danger is just not right.
Thank you, Alderman Stunek. Anybody else? Seeing no other members raise their hand, we will vote by roll call.
Lambert.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Bevins. Bevins.
Yes.
W Erickson.
Yes.
T Erickson.
Yes.
And Johnson.
Yes, that motion carries. Next up, Joe, as we need to decide what to do about the dangerous dog now.
Well, correct. There are requirements under the city code and under state law. So in this instance, it was a little unusual because the owner has indicated that the dog right now is not within the city's jurisdiction. And that the intention is that it will not return to the city's jurisdiction. If the dog is declared dangerous, it has to be registered by state law in whatever jurisdiction it's in. So the council may want to consider putting conditions on in the event that the dog is. In the city's jurisdiction. If the dog is not actually in the city's jurisdiction, then she just has to register it somewhere else. And to follow the requirements of that jurisdiction, whether that's Crow Wing County or Pequot Lakes or whatever.
So, Joe, I have a question. We. The potentially dangerous dog declaration was from up on Hartley Lake Road and that was the Crow Wing County Sheriff's Office made that determination. This bite was in Brainerd, which is also in Crow Wing County. So why didn't this issue go back to the Crow Wing County Sheriff's Office to? Is it just because Michael Brian was the one who responded? The city was the entity that responded to the bite?
Mr. President, the jurisdiction, so the city's got its own jurisdiction. The county is only, their jurisdiction is anywhere where the city does not have jurisdiction. So they're kind of defaulting to everything else.
Okay. Thank you. Does somebody have a motion? Alderman Bevins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that if this dog get picked up in the city of Brainerd, it get taken out to youth to be euthanized.
Second.
We have a motion by Bevins and a second by Pritchett that if this dog is ever picked up in the city of Brainerd, it will be brought in to be euthanized. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote.
Excuse me, excuse me, may I say something?
No, you may not. Not a member of the city council.
All right. Okay.
Any discussion from a member of the Brainerd City Council? I'll even let the mayor speak if he wants. None will vote by roll call.
I'm slightly surprised by that motion, but that is our decision to make, so.
Go to roll.
All right, Lambert.
Yes.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Bevins.
Yes.
W Erickson.
Yes.
T Erickson.
Yes.
And Johnson.
Yes, that motion carries. So Joe, all of the things that are required by city code, although that probably doesn't apply, but everything that's required by state statute is still required. Right? So we don't need to set forth any guidelines of proper enclosures, muzzles, insurance, correct?
Mr. President and Council, so those requirements like the insurance. And so forth, those flow from the registration requirement. You have to register as a dangerous dog. This dog isn't in the city's jurisdiction and therefore doesn't have to be registered here. It has to be registered. In the county or in Pequot Lakes, wherever it's going to be. And that entity will have to put in whatever requirements that are. That they want to put in place for, for registering that animal. And again, the dog owner is required by state law to register that animal wherever it ends up. Wherever it ends up being. It's not something that can just be blown off. It's going to go back to the Hartley. Address. She has to register that with the county and the county is going to have to decide about the insurance and the closure and all that business.
All right, thank you, Joe. So we don't need to take any more action.
I believe the county has taken, county, the city has taken the action necessary so far.
Thank you. So with that, we'll just move on to the. Next item on the agenda, which is 6B, what we all came here for, the 2019 audit presentation. Take it away, Mary Reedy.
Okay, thank you for having me tonight. Yes, I'm sure everybody joined just to listen to the presentation. I'll try and be quick. I know Connie and I do this presentation together. We'll do it together again this year. But if you have questions, feel free to stop us at any time, kind of an open dialogue. So feel free, we can go back and forth. As necessary. So we issued the normal audited financial statements and then we also printed out the PowerPoints. So my presentation, we usually just stick with the PowerPoint. It gives us information from the financial statements that can be tied back and forth if you need to. So we'll go through the PowerPoint and again, just stop me if you have any questions. So page two of the PowerPoint, our discussion agenda items. We'll go quickly over the Brainerd Public Utilities Audit Results, the financial results. And then we'll talk about the city's required communication, audit results, financial results, and then a few other discussions and insights, observations that came from the audit. So page three, the Brainerd Public Utilities, we issued a clean opinion on the financial statements. Kind of expected with the city. Internal control, we had no findings noted. Todd does a detailed review of the financial statements and all of the key controls are in place, no segregation of duties issues, things like that. And then Minnesota leave compliance, we test for about seven pages of state statutes to make sure that Brainerd Public Utilities is in compliance and we had no findings noted. Page four, these are the actual financial results. You can see the revenues decreased slightly. A lot of that was due to usage, a decrease in usage. Expenses fairly similar, increased slightly from last year. And then you can see the unrestricted net position increased from last year as well. If you go to page five, you can see the balance sheet. The cash decreased due to an increased purchase of capital assets. We talked about revenues and then also had a positive cash flow from operations. So operations is covering normal expenses. Okay, also had similar results from prior year, as you saw on the previous graph. The change in that position was a positive 2.5 million and that was exactly the same as last year. So what, how did they, you know, the revenues decreased actually, so what, so they were able to come out similar because they had an increase in interest income. Of about 340,000. So that offset the decrease in usage and decrease in revenues. So page six, then. This is the second half of the balance sheet. Here you have liabilities and the overall net position. So overall debt decreased, just regular payments on the bonds and no new debt was issued. Two of the three departments reported positive change in that position. So water just had a slight decrease of about 132,000. So overall, that was Brainerd Public Utilities, a fairly decent audit, clean audit and good, overall good results. Page seven, our required communication to the council. Our primary responsibility is auditors provide an opinion on the fairness of the financial statements presented tonight. We do review internal accounting controls. We want to make sure that the city has controls and that they're in place and working. It is a risk-based audit approach, so we don't test every transaction. There's obviously no way we could get through all of those. So we do some detail level testing just to make sure controls are operating and the procedures are in place and working. We do express an opinion based on those tests. And then report on internal controls and compliance over federal awards. So the city expends more than 750,000 of federal dollars for the year. And so what that requires us as auditors is to do a detailed level testing of programs. This year, we actually tested a new program. Highway planning was material this year. So we actually tested that instead of the airport federal dollars. And we had no findings over the federal dollars this year. Significant accounting policies are outlined in note one to the financial statements. No unusual transactions and then the, the one new Gatsby standard, so governmental accounting standards board statement number 84. Just required the agency fund to be closed out this year, about 6,900. Other than that, there were no significant changes with that implementation. Okay, page eight, within the bound documents, remember there are some management judgment and accounting estimates. The biggest one probably is the net pension liability. So that's your para underfunded piece that does go on as a liability. Again, if Para was ever fully funded, we would report that as an asset to the city as well. There were no corrected or uncorrected adjustments. So as you're getting financial information throughout the year, it is accurate and you can go ahead and make. Financial decisions off of those information. No disagreements with management. Page nine. Difficulties encountered in performing the audit. I think the city had a little more difficulty than we did in performing the audit. With everything that happened, we had to do everything off-site. So Connie and her team had to get us everything online, scan in documents, things like that. So thank you to Connie and her team. We were able to issue on time, just a little bit later than usual, but nothing too unexpected. And then we do have group financial statements. So as everybody knows, BPU and HRA is a component unit of the city. They are audited separately. So those would be considered group financial statements. We do bring those numbers in. And then the library and airport are actually component units as well, but those get tested when we do the audit of the city. So page 10, the overall city audit results. We issued an unmodified or a clean opinion on the financial statements. So that is the highest level of assurance that us as auditors can give. Compliance and internal control or financial reporting. We had no non-compliance, no findings. So overall, clean report. I know in the past, we've had the drafting of the financial statements. But Connie does a detailed level review, ticks and ties in all of the numbers in the bound document. So that finding was able to be removed probably a couple of years ago. So overall, very clean. And then it talked about the federal program. So we did highway planning and construction. About 785,000 of expenses flow through this year as expenditures. So we did test that and had no findings. And then we also test Minnesota legal compliance for the city, make sure that the city is in compliance with all laws and regulations. And there were no findings there either. And then page 11, Connie's going to go ahead and talk about the financial results.
Okay, so revenues were higher than expenditures for the current year. That's where the purple line is higher than the blue line. We were budgeting to be about $15,000 of revenues exceeding expenditures. However, when we settled all of our union contracts, we did end up eating up that, that budget reserve, so to speak. Fund balance did increase by 1% and we were able to transfer $133,000 into the capital fund. This percentage was determined based on the 2019 expenditures. And if you remember, we changed our fund balance policy in February so that we were looking at the next year's operating budget. And we still would have been at 41% of our fund balance. We still would have increased 1%, but we would not have transferred the 133,000 into the capital equipment fund. This slide shows the compares budget to actual. You can see that we did increase our licenses and permits. This would be our building permits, that kind of stuff that we had the high school in Harrison involved in there. And so our license and permits were higher than our budgeted amounts. And this is for our working funds, I should say. This is our, our general public safety streets and park and rec expenditures. Here's budgeted expenses when we look at it. You can see that we were budgeting no capital outlay and that we had 2%. This is the way we report our leases, the way we budget for our lease as an operating expense versus how it has to be reporting to Gassy. So when we looking at Gatsby, the capital outlay is when the leases start, when we budget, we just have that be part of our operating budget. Slide 14. Okay, slide 14 is the numbers that go behind the graphs. Reveners exceeded the budget. Or revenues exceeded the budget. It pretty much came in from special assessments, interest income, which had a lot to do with adjusting our investments to market. So it's kind of an inflated revenue number, if you ask me, because we're going to hold those investments. To maturity, we're not actually. We're not actually going to be able to sell them for the market value that they're worth. And then we also had building permits that were $217,000 over budget. Expenditures compared to budget, we were over budget by about 300,297,000. And a lot of this had to do with the snow removal budget for 2019 was significantly higher than what we budgeted. We go to the next slide. It's the recommendation of the state auditor to have six months of unassigned fund balance at the end of the year. This is because the city operates on the cash on hand that we have at 1231 until the middle of June, when the city receives 70% of its tax settlement. So you can see that we've definitely made progress toward that, that goal or that benchmark figure. This slide compares different revenues over the years. You can see that we had a lot of big increase in the intergovernmental revenue. And again, that has to do with what projects we do. As Mary stated this year, that they audited the highway construction project. And we did receive a lot of federal and state grants and that would fall into the intergovernmental revenue bucket. You also see the increase in the charges for services. Again, that's going to be our building permits. Next slide compares different categories of expenditures. Since we had an increase in intergovernmental due to construction, we would expect to see an increase in our capital outlay as well. You know, we're seeing a decrease in our, our principal and interest payments. Nothing else really sticks out, I guess, in, in my mind here. We've seen an increase in public works and again, we saw an increase in our snow removal cost. This slide shows our debt service funds. We have to have enough cash on hand at December 31st to pay our February 2020 or February 1st of the next year payment, because that's where we get our income. This gross, this graph shows that the city was balanced. We do want, we had a little bit more cash than what we had debt service payment in February. Even if we would be backwards like we were in 2015, we definitely still made our debt payments on time. It was just that the debt service had to borrow funds from other, other, we had to borrow money from other funds. Any sense is essentially what that means. So it's the various types of debt that we have within the city. We've definitely seen our special assessment revenue go down. Increase in our bond revenue debt was due when we issued debt for the airport. We're seeing increasing capital leases, obviously, as we keep continuing to leases. Everything else is kind of staying pretty much the same. It would just be spikes as we go along. Then we have our enterprise funds, which is our sanitary and storms who are fun. They operate more as a business. They, they operate like BPU does, but they need to cover all their operating expenses, including depreciation. They, the overall operations have increased to 234,000 and an increase in net position of over 1,234,000. Now turn it back over to Mary.
Okay, perfect. And then I'd like to point out to the business type funds were converted probably just a couple of years ago as well. So now we are keeping track of those as business type, like Connie had said. So any assets attached to those are booked and recorded in those funds and then collections throughout the year. So a few insights and observations. So overall, the audit results for the city are positive. Definitely see the, the debt service funds meeting your cash obligations and, and forward on those instead of backwards. So that's good progress. Want to keep monitoring that. There was a slight decrease in debt service, but you're going to be spending down some of that prepaid special assessment balance. And it was not significant this year. So going forward, it's positive. Staff was very responsive to audit increase and request. Like I said, it was all online. So many emails flooded in your finance department. So thank you, you know, again, they, they were able to address everything, got everything on the portal for us to complete the audit. The state does require a state reporting form be submitted by June 30th. That was submitted timely. And then again, the city applied for their GFOA certificate and that was submitted timely as well. So we don't expect to have any issues with that. The fund balance reserve, so operating funds like Connie had discussed, those first few slides are those four major funds put together. In past years, we've never, you know, combined those onto the face of the financial statements. But since they're so intertwined, if you were to look at your financial statements, you're able to analyze those four funds first. They're all together. You can kind of see the fund balances, all of them together and combine them for your working funds. We, we thought a couple of years ago that that made it a little bit easier read for the council to see where those funds were at. So then as you analyze those, the fund balance talked about 41% of the 2019 annual expenditures. So next year, you'll see us reporting that differently with the change in your policy. Right now, the policy was to have 35 to 50% of operating expenditures. And also you could only increase that unassigned fund balance 1% at a time per year. So last year was 40%, this year was 41%. So you met that, that policy as well. Okay, page 22, the revolving loan fund. Negative change in fund balance just mean that the city has continued to use those funds. Right now you have about 13,000 in fund balance, but you have about 1.3 million in loans. So the money is out there and it's, it's where it needs to be helping your local businesses. Debt service fund we talked about has about a $2.1 million fund balance right now, about a decrease of 125,000. So enough to pay for February's principal and interest payments. And then the capital projects fund, like Connie was talking about, had quite a few of revenues and expenditures in that fund. So 3.7 million of expenditures on projects. Or sorry, 5.2 million of expenditures. And then you have assigned fund balance about 3.7 million in the, the fund balance there. So approximately 2 million of that was transfers in and taxes levied to help pay for those projects. And then the intergovernmental revenues Connie was talking about was about 2.7 million that flowed through there that helped pay for those capital projects. Okay, so overall, that was the city, a brief highlight of the city activity. Hopefully no surprises. Like I said, as you're getting that financial information, it's, it's accurate. And the council is able to make informed decision off of that information. And so I didn't know if anybody had any other questions.
Any questions? Seeing none, Mary, I want to thank you for being here tonight. And I know Connie's been calling you, asking questions about our coronavirus relief fund money. And glad you're willing to help us navigate that a bit going forward. So thank you for that.
Yes.
I would also like to say, Mary mentioned, you know, that it was a lot on the finance staff, but we also couldn't do it without the other department heads as well, working. You know, we really bombarded Paul this year with the highway, a single audit. And, and I just want to thank everybody for their cooperation and working with us as well. I couldn't do the reporting without their help. So thank you to everyone as well.
Thank you, Connie. If nobody has any questions, then Mary will let her get back to her stuff and we'll move on. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
That brings us to number seven, council committee reports. Seven A is Safety and Public Works Committee, Alderman Beavins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have four agenda items this evening, the three posted. And then as you recall, we added item number four, which is the food truck. Change in ordinance suggested by committee development director Chansky. That'll be item number four. So item number one is improvement 20-03. That's the 2020 large patching project quotes. The motion out of committee is to accept staff's recommendation, approval of the Anderson Brothers attached quotes in the total aggregate amount of $50,000 in ISO move.
This is Erickson, and I second that.
A motion by Beavins and a second by Wayne Erickson, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Lambert.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Richard.
Yes.
Beavins?
Yes.
W Erickson?
Yes.
T Erickson?
Yes.
And Johnson.
Yes, that motion carries, Alderman Beavins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item number two is labeled on our agenda, organized garbage collection. As you all recall, this was actually brought up, not as organized garbage collection, but as what can we do about the two-wheel cart issue and people not policing their own garbage containers? That has evolved into something larger, particularly when brought up the issue of enforcement. What SP&amp;W's motion is to put this on the agenda for the first meeting in September. Invite the organize, all the haulers affected and try and come up with a solution to the issue on the first meeting in September at 5:30 PM. And I, I believe that's just an FYI, not a motion.
Thank you.
And I, unless there's any questions, we'll move on to item number three. And that's the Eighth Street cut across. Mayor Bedeau brought forth the issue of how Google is directing traffic north, south off of Mill, heading east onto Eighth Street from Brainerd to Crosby and back as the designated route. This can easily be seen, if you look at the packet, as an issue and a potentially dangerous issue, particularly on the eastern T edge of H. And the motion is to direct staff to install the no semi-traffic signs entering onto Eighth Street and to report back in two, at the next meeting, at the first meeting in August, as to whether further enforcement is needed in ISO move.
We have a motion by Beavins, Wayne, you're muted. So muted.
Lambert second.
Lambert seconds, we have motion by Beavins, a second by Lambert, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Lambert.
Yes.
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Beavins?
Yes.
W Erickson?
Yes.
W Erickson? Yes. T Erickson?
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes, that motion carries, Alderman Beavins.
Thank you. The fourth item is the suggestion by committee development director Chansky to put a moratorium on ordinance, the entire ordinance involving food trucks. I'm going to let him explain the issue. There is no motion out of committee, but we did have an attempt. And we might want to try and do something at the council level. But I think, if I may, Mr. Chair, let committee development director Chansky give us what the issue actually is.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, President. I'll be brief. So on July 6th, if you remember, I brought, there was another food truck that came to town that submitted a request for exemption to the transient food overlay district. Throughout the summer, we've actually had a number of food trucks inquire about coming to Brainerd once they see our ordinance and our restrictions, but all of them have backed away, told them not to come here. But with the cancellation of the state fair, and essentially every county and local fair throughout the state, all these food trucks are getting creative and getting out there, going out of the state. I had another call from a fairly well-known food truck that's well-known at the state fair. Miller's Chief Curd, they have a variety of stands. They have three of their stands actually in Little Falls last week inquiring. They're like, that becomes Cub Food, they asked them to come, and a lot of their Cub Foods. And so they contacted me, a couple of reasons, a couple of things. First of all, initial response would have to be a no for ordinance, because the Cub Food parking lot is not in overlay district, as well as they might need to be at least 300 feet away from me and rest. This is again, that's one example. Well, recent example, we've had others that because of our ordinance, has told not to come to Brainerd. So with that in mind, something I, I thought I would ask, I'm asking the council to consider we put a moratorium or a suspension on Section 577 code to Mayor 2020. Some of the conditions I recommended were that the vendors still apply for and receive a food truck permit with the, with the fee. This will ensure that we are licensed by the state. They have their certain requirements and they can only operate on private property with the permission of the property owner. Want to operate in a city park, they would still have to get permission from the park board every day. And that they would have to be inspected by the fire department or something, request to be in there. One item that came up during committee was also hours of operation. So that can be something that the council can still have in there right now with ordinance, so they can break more limits and stuff. So I just wanted to bring this up and the council considered this as something to do under my specs. Or if you're interested in giving it, I had put this on there.
Thank you, David. And Kelly, you said you didn't have a motion? Go ahead, Kelly.
Correct, Mr. Chair. I, I sensed, and I certainly the committee members can, can speak for themselves, but I sensed from all of us some desire to, to, to relax the restrictions on the ordinance. I personally like a good corn dog and cheese curd as much as the next guy. The issue became is if you eliminate Section 66, now it's laissez-faire. A lot of people put a lot of effort into protecting areas of the community from being overrun. We've had up to seven people, seven food trucks apply already, or at least inquire about applying. Many have chosen not to, as Mr. Chancy said, because of the restrictions. But we also have, the, the committee also was trying to protect the taxpaying brick and mortar restaurants that have just been devastated by the COVID. And now to turn it into a state fair parking lot didn't seem fair. You're gonna, you're gonna, you potentially could devastate what's an already damaged business. So I, I'll let Jan and Wayne speak for themselves. And Jan did have a motion that failed for lack of second. And I don't know where to go. I don't know that we can make a decision in 10 minutes on this. It was, I think, was, I think, my thought. So there is no motion out of committee. And with no motion, nothing would change. The restrictions that are placed by Section 66 would stay in place. But eliminating it all really opens things up. So that's the issue.
Okay, Wayne, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, I, my heart is for the brick and mortar. I, I agree with Kelly. I, I just, with what's went on the last four months, five months here with the COVID-19, I just hate to bring new businesses into town that pay no taxes. They pay a, you know, a fee to operate, but that certainly doesn't compensate the state taxes or the city taxes, should I say. So yeah, I'm, I, I understand what Dave is struggling with and, and, but I just hate to open it up too much. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, this is Lambert.
Yeah, Jan.
I made the motion, as Kelly had said. You know, we're, we are, we are relaxing the outdoor eating area for our restaurants. And you know, the long door to parking lots, going streets and sidewalks. I do not think we should be restricting, this is another form of business, that we should be restricting business of another business. I also think this needs to be re-looked at. Perhaps we need to look at a little bit more flexibility in this ordinance. I, I feel for our city, our, our brick and mortar. I also feel for the people with the food trucks. But we should be able to see how we can put it all together. We should be able to, we should be able to look at it and at least look at it and see if there's something we can do. That's all I have to say.
Okay, I, you know, I, I hear what you're all saying and I, you're not wrong. But if we go back to when we first crafted this ordinance, I didn't like the overlay. I thought it was too restrictive. And I know I disagreed with some of our great brick and mortar businesses, but... but I would be in favor of lifting restrictions now and/or revisiting the entire ordinance and maybe rewriting it. Tad, Kevin, Dave, Dave Pritchett, go ahead and add it.
I get to my mute button. There we go. You know, I am worried about our brick-and-mortar, especially the situation that we're in now. I would agree with Congressman Johnson that we should revisit this. Yeah, we need more flexibility, but putting a moratorium on the entire ordinance, I don't think is the answer. I think we need to have a little bit better thought-out plan of action than either say, all the same restrictions we've had or no restrictions whatsoever. So I would recommend that, that we look at it, or, you know, maybe planning and zoning, look at it and see if we can come up with something that we can, we can agree with on that would be equitable to both our brick-and-mortar and these food trucks. And again, something that Councilperson Erickson said, these food trucks generally are not businesses in Brainerd. They don't pay taxes. And although we serve the community, I think our first and foremost duty is to our citizens and to our businesses that help us run our city.
Thank you, Alderman Bevins.
Mr. Chair, to put this baby to rest, SPW would be willing to take this on at the next meeting. We literally echo everything you and Mr. Pritchett have said. And as you can tell, there was some enthusiasm towards making a change. The problem was, we had five minutes, and the choice that was put before us is either change in its entirety or, you know, or not. And to err on the side of caution, the answer was not. But if we can have a little more time, I'd much rather take it back in SPW than send it off to another committee, because I believe there's some timeliness in this as far as the summer season. So that would be my suggestion. Let's SPW, but give us a little more time on this. The next meeting would be August 3rd. That's my recommendation.
Tad Erickson.
Yeah, so I agree. Let's definitely revisit it. It was added to the agenda tonight, so we need more time to discuss it. I'm in favor of, I think there's a balance to be struck. I'm in favor of a lot more flexibility on this. I think that there's a lot of restaurants in surrounding communities, and so I think expanding this could bring in additional customers to the community, and long-term, you know, a rising tide lifts all boats. So I think there's a balance to be struck, and I'm in favor of a lot more flexibility, and I'd love to revisit it.
Thank you. Tad, Kevin.
I kind of agree with everybody else. I think we need to come to some kind of a balance, and I think sending it back to Mr. Bevins in his committee is a great idea. And I think we need to lighten up on this section a little bit. The other thing is, all indications are, the governor's going to speak this week, and indications are pointing that he might tighten things up a little more. So giving us some extra time to deal with this, I think, is the proper way to do it.
Thank you, Kevin. Mayor Bedeau.
Thank you. I think it's a great idea. I support what you guys are looking at here. Lightning those restrictions, I think, is important for us moving forward. But one of the things I do want to state is, although this seems reactive in terms of other businesses looking to come here, our goal should be, by opening this up, to entice business owners and residents of Brainerd to actually move forward with creating these types of businesses as well. So although I do support the idea of kind of halting this process tonight, I like the idea that, you know, if these are businesses from outside, great, but this is something that, you know, people that I know are actually interested in, and have listed some of our restrictions as reasons why they don't.
Thank you, Mayor. So yeah, I guess, put it back on the safety and public works for the next meeting, and Chance, if you could just kind of get the primary concerns, kind of distill what you've heard from the food truck operators, and have, we can have that conversation in a couple weeks, and maybe we can let them operate for a month of summer. Okay, Alderman Bevins ended report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Correct.
Seven B Personnel and Finance Committee, Alderman Pritchett.
All right, we have five items on our agenda, and item number one is the approval of bills, and the motion out of committee is approve payment of bills. And I assume move.
Second.
A motion by Pritchett, a second by Bevins. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Lambert.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes.
W Erickson?
Yes.
T Erickson?
Yes.
And Johnson.
Yes, motion carries. Alderman Pritchett.
Item number.
Has left the meeting.
Is the discussion of the Lakes Area Media Collaborative, and motion coming out of committee is to formally continue the funding for Lakes Area Media Collaborative, and to move forward with the requests, proposals to seek another provider, but in the meantime, to allow staff to basically handle installation and operation of the equipment with the franchise fees that would have been going to the Lakes Area Collaborative, and I assume move.
And second.
We have a motion by Dave, and a second by Tad Erickson, Alderman Pritchett.
Okay, so last time we met, we had a couple of stipulations for the Lakes Area Media Collaborative. We had no response for them whatsoever. We looked for, the staff looked for an agreement. There was no evidence of an agreement. There was just a motion to supply funding. Digital Horizons has already pretty much installed most of the equipment that we already have, which is in council chambers. So the staff is also meeting with Charter Cable on the 22nd to discuss possibility of, you know, renewing that sort of delivery. But right now, we, staff felt that they might be able to, they should be able to handle the operations, the installation, be a good thing that they'd at least know what the guts of the system were. And now what we could do is simultaneously looking to see if we could get a reasonable proposal from outside to operate it. Basically, if you did the math, we were paying $2,000 a session to broadcast. So we probably can do that for a fair amount cheaper.
Thank you, Alderman Pritchett. I support this motion. I've been reluctant to have this, I've been reluctant to move too fast on the Lakes Area Media Collaborative in the past, because I'm, I think it's real important that we do have our meetings broadcast in as many places as possible, including cable television. But I see that that's part of the motion. Staff's going to move ahead with that, so I'm glad to see it. This is a good motion. And I'm quite surprised that we received a proposal in 2005, seemed to accept it, then all of a sudden, we just cut them a check every single year without ever revisiting it. We gotta, we gotta do better than that, I think. Any more discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Lambert?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes.
W Erickson?
Yes.
W Erickson? T Erickson?
Yes.
And Johnson.
Yes, that motion carries. Alderman Pritchett.
All right, item number three is the school resource officer contract amount for the 2019-2020 school year. And the motion coming out of committee is to authorize staff to reduce the SRO contract amount with ISD 181 for the 2019-2020 school year by $20,000, and to use COVID relief funds to reimburse the city for SOR wages from $31620 to $52320 as a result of the officer's change in duties due to COVID-19, and I assume move.
Second.
A motion by Pritchett, a second by Stewart. Alderman Pritchett.
When you look at that, we contracted $75,000 with the school district, but then when schools were closed, the officer was transitioned to other duties, to patrol duties. There was some contact with the school. So if you look at, they calculated the amount of money, both by doing it monthly and by doing it daily, and it came out to more than $20,000, but there was some work done with the school. So the staff figured it would be good to kind of round it to $20,000. School district is just offering, is asking for some adjustment. So staff and the committee thought that was fair.
Thank you. I read the agreement, and it says we will provide a school resource officer for up to 173 days, and I think we lived up to our end of the bargain. So I'm going to no on refunding the school district money for an agreement that we both agreed to, and that was fully carried out on our end. But I will be voting no. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Lambert. Lambert?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes.
W Erickson?
Yeah.
T Erickson?
Yes.
And Johnson.
Nope, that motion carries. Alderman Pritchett.
All right, that takes us to item number four, which is street and sewer maintenance one employee debit resignation, and motion coming committee is to accept with regret the resignation of Daniel Dieter effective July 29, 2020, and authorize the backfilling of the position from the same pool of maintenance one applications currently being advertised from a previous resignation, and I assume move.
Second.
A motion by Pritchett, a second by Tad Erickson. Any discussion? Hearing none, we will vote.
Lambert?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Pritchett? Pritchett?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes.
W Erickson? Erickson?
Yes.
And Johnson.
Yes, motion carries. Alderman Pritchett.
All right, that takes us to item number five, which is request for proposal for the 2020 audit services. And the motion coming out of committee is to retain Larson Allen for the 2020 audit services, and I assume move.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Alderman Pritchett.
Just a little bit. We haven't had an RFP since 2015. However, we looked into doing quotes, learned that wasn't really done very often. But a lot of the reason for retaining is, one, they're local, they're extremely responsive, staff has been darn happy with their work in every single aspect. And so there's no problem with looking for an RFP, but we're just recommending that we stay with them for 2020.
Thank you. So this would, did they, do we have a contract price for 2020? Like, are they going up 2%? We don't know what they're going to be yet.
Senator President.
Donnie, yeah.
Yes, no, that we do not have a quote yet for 2020 audit services. It's just that if we were going up RFP, you would need to do this now.
Okay.
So that's why it's on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Bevins, please wait till after the meeting for your bath. Any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we'll vote.
Oh, Mr. Chair, this is Lambert.
Oh, Jan.
I just think it's, I'm so sorry. I just think it's good that we stay with the same audit that the rest of the city entities use. I think it's just good to do that. So that's all I want to say. And that all?
Now we're ready to vote.
All right, Lambert.
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Fresh smelling Bevins?
Yes.
W Erickson?
Yes.
T Erickson?
Yes.
And Johnson.
Yes, that motion carries. Alderman Pritchett.
End of report.
Thank you. That brings us to item number eight on our agenda, unfinished business. Eight A call for applications. Mayor Bedeau.
There we go. Oh, it is that time, ladies and gentlemen. You are dialed into 107.me, and it is going to be a good time. Mayor has the recommends for terms expiring 12/31 of said year, cable TV advisory committee, one term expiring 2021, two terms expiring 2022, the charter commission, two terms expiring 2020, one term expiring 2021, and one term expiring 2022, which is pending appointment. We will get to that oh-so-soon. Also, in the mayor recommends, these terms expire, or this term expires September 7th of said year. That is the Economic Development Authority, the EDA, that is one term expiring 2020, again, pending appointment, as we will get to. And then two other things that we need work with here, the water tower committee, which is moving and getting back to full strength, but we are still looking for further applicants in that process. And newly brought back up to my attention, the parking commission, which you can get into the dirty, dirty deeds of trying to figure out where people can or cannot park in the city of Brainerd. So you can enjoy that. I know that myself and Paul Sandy, I believe, are members of that automatically. So I can't think of two better guys to hang out with on a nightly basis. So may I move on to me, or will you take that?
I'll allow it.
Okay. Committee recommendations, these are two recommendations I have by myself, Mr. Mayor Bedeau. The first of which is Michael O'Day to the charter commission, and the second of which is Michael O'Day to the Economic Development Authority.
Move to approve.
Second.
Pritchett, to approve the recommendations. Any discussion?
So is this a motion to have Michael O'Day fill every opening in every committee? Because that would take care of a lot of those problems.
I like that idea.
He should apply for cable TV, too. Parking commission, get on it. All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote.
Lambert?
Yes.
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yeah, yes.
W Erickson? T Erickson? T Erickson?
Yes.
And Johnson.
And carries, welcome to the charter commission, Michael O'Day. I think you have a quorum there now, Kelly.
I am.
All I could say is, somebody called the mayor out on the charter commission, and the mayor has done what the mayor has been asked to do. So you are welcome.
Thank you. Let's hope the district judge doesn't disagree with you.
Why?
That'll bring us to 8C to adopt the amended preparedness plan. Jennifer?
Yep, Mr. Chair, members of the council, I can be very brief. We modified the preparedness plan, just basically based on the new League of Minnesota Cities and Minnesota Department of Health and CVC guidelines. Just a couple of changes. Other workers need to be informed if somebody tests positive for COVID. We add some cleaning of vehicles. While we are looking to open city hall, which we will discuss, we will still have public access restricted and monitored, so that we're sure that we can kind of manage COVID. And so people will be asked to review a health questionnaire. They will ring a doorbell, which is a video. They will be buzzed in, and they will be directed to the department that we're at their meeting. We still are going to encourage people to meet with us via email or video or also by phone. So we will be keeping a visitor log to track who is coming into city hall to assist with contract tracing, should we be requested. And then we will also make sure that when people enter city hall, they will have access to a mask. They will not be required to wear a mask under this preparedness plan, but they will be encouraged to wear a mask. And then our staff will be required to wear a mask if they're dealing one-on-one with the public, but if they're at city hall behind the glass partition, they will not. We will also be putting some markings on the floor to make sure that we are maintaining six feet of social distancing. So those are basically the changes in the preparedness plan. So, Mr. Chair, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, any questions or a motion to approve the updated, Dave Pritchett?
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion by Pritchett. We'll give that second to Stewart.
I beat you.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote.
Lambert?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Pritchett? Pritchett?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes. Yes.
T Erickson?
Yes.
Yes, that motion carries. Jennifer, I think your internet connection out in Stix and Baxter there just isn't that good.
Try moving to Brainerd.
Is that video?
I think, because you've had to call people to say yes a couple times, so I think it's lagging.
There I go. All right. All right.
But uh that'll bring us to the next item. Ten, ten A is a conditional use permit for Jacobson Excavating and Landscaping at three four two four Oak Street. David Chansky.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a CUC request on behalf of Joe and Grace Dickerson for their business, Jacobson Excavating Landscaping, the Nicky's Department of Landscaping materials at thirty four point for Oak Street. This is a property that they are looking to develop into greenhouse and retail space for their company. Um as they're preparing this, there's actually something they've been working on about two years. Um they submitted a preliminary site plan to myself and during that review, I kind of realized that um while their main part of their project is a permanent use in the B four zone of the property zone, um the outdoor storage piece is a temporary use. Uh so we decided to submit a CUP to the planning commission uh first. That way, if there was any issues with that, um they could address that before the rest of the project is out. The planning commission considered it during the meeting last week on fifteen and voted unanimously approved the CUP with no conditions citing uh stats of the fact that included in the plan.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve or deny?
Move to approve.
Lambert, second.
Second by Lambert. Any discussion? Is that raising your hand or massaging your scalp there, Bevins?
Yes.
All right. Hearing no discussion, we'll vote.
Lambert?
Yes.
Stunick?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes.
W Erickson?
Yes.
D Erickson?
Yes.
And Johnson?
Jeff, I think counsel.
Those the ten B conditional use permit amendment for Harrison Elementary School at fifteen fifteen Oak Street.
Thank you, Mr. President, again. So uh we TC on behalf of sorry, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay. Uh we TC on behalf of ISD one eighty one, committed a uh a CUP amendment request for the Harrison uh conditional use permit that was adopted by the city council last April. Uh this amendment request is a request that the city reconsidered the conditions regarding boulevard trees. Uh two different sections here. First, um on on the A section of the building, there were the requirements to put boulevard trees um in the sidewalk, between the sidewalk and the street. Um part of that condition came from a concern that at the time, the school district was not able to promise that the current mature trees on that property would be able to be saved. How would be able to save? They have determined at this point that those trees will be saved and against intentions of this time of replacing that sidewalk. Uh additionally, in front of the re-parking lot, um the they found that when they were preparing that site for the planting, um they found that there is a CTC fiber line that is very shallowly, about two feet below the dirt right there. Um this was requesting that there's those trees that were probably put in the median, even if we allow them to move it the inside of the sidewalk on their property. Concerns would be when their concerns are when planting the trees affecting the CTC line uh and trees grow, if they would affect the line and that if CTC ever had to maintain the line, damage to the trees. Again, the planning commission considered this request on fifteen. Uh the commission voted five one to approve the amendment with the condition that should achieve the damage, become ill or otherwise be removed, thoroughly replaced in an aesthetic and seating compatible manner.
So before we, oh, before I open up for a motion, I have a couple of questions. Last March, the school district applied for the conditional use permit and the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously put in the street tree condition. Then the school district came to the city of Brainerd, said, please take out the tree condition. We don't want to do that. And the Planning and Zoning Commission is trying to make us plant these trees that we don't want to plant. And then we unanimously, as a council, left that condition in there. So now they're coming to us as their project is almost done and saying, hey, we still don't want to do those trees. Can we please not do the trees? I just don't understand why the Planning and Zoning Commission reversed course from the condition that they set forth. There, there wasn't any new information or, I mean, the CTC cables, of course, there's utilities under the sidewalk. That's, that's u- utilities go in the public right of way. So I just don't think we should be approving this amendment because both planning and zoning and the city council unanimously supported the street trees just last year. But that is my question, David. What, w- why did planning, their mind, type of facts did they use to determine that what they decided just a year ago was no longer relevant?
I'll, I'll answer that, Mr. President, and also I'll, I'll leave it open for uh Alderman Lambert as well if he's on the planning committee. If he has anything to add. Uh but what I understand, I think it's um when it came to the trees and from the original building, um at that time, there wasn't that promise that they would be safe. Uh now they believe that they didn't save, they're not doing anything with the trees. Uh they are quite mature. They keep saying over the boulevard. Um and that because the school district will have a plan to replace that sidewalk. I think that's a minor fault. Um and so they felt that um like leaving, uh leaving the trees still met a certain of what they were looking for. Uh I know Alderman Lambert was the one who made the motion that required that any points could ever be removed, that they be replanted. Um and then there was a discussion about that fiber line. Uh they seem to think that that was a reasonable enough request. One of the things that he did discuss and actually talk with Engineer Sandy about is that they would like Engineering Sandy to come at a future meeting to have a discussion with the planning commission of, you know, helping educate them about replacement of utilities, how utilities should be placed. Um and so because Engineering Sandy uh manages the right of way, but the planning commission kind of governs things on the top, how can the engineering department and the planning commission kind of work together to make sure that when we are developing projects like that, we don't run into issues of, well, now there's a, there's a fiber line that um is buried too shallowly and that is affecting uh
Thank you. But there's, I mean, they're spending two hundred million dollars on ICS and WSN. I imagine somebody in one of those offices knows that utility lines exist under sidewalks. I, I just can't believe that that's a surprise. But Jam, would you, yeah, Jam, would you explain why the planning is only reversed course?
The, the um issue was mainly on the uh uh fiber line. And because it was not buried at the depth it should have been. And so we, we um gave them um we, we, we changed, we kind of back went backwards and had the trees um not put in that area. What came out of the count, out of the commission is that you know, it's wrong that things were not buried where they should be. And so what we're wondering is how can we prevent that in the future? And you know, with it, and I had brought up it, since it's an older city, there's probably, we're gonna probably run into that more often than not. So uh that was our compromise. We wanted to keep the m- mature trees, but we wanted them to change, be sure to replant them if anything happens. Um and then we said no to the boulevard trees. So I know it's not, but
I, I have one question. If, if you put in a new condition that if they remove the mature trees, that they should plant small trees, streak, you know, plant new trees, how can they plant new trees when there's a fiber optic cable in the ground in that part of the world?
But that, that is uh beyond that area. Uh this is up by the, the lawn between the sidewalk and the school. That's the one we're talking about in the mature trees.
Mm-hmm.
And the, and if I, I understand right, the uh fiber was between the curb and the sidewalk. Am I correct, David?
I think that's where, yeah.
Yeah. So and that, you know, that was two, you know, two different areas that um, but because it was the way the, the um boulevard trees, basically because the utilities were put in wrong. That's what happened then. And uh I don't know what more we could have done other than saying, do it and ruin the c- the cable, the fiber.
Hey, thanks, Jan. Paul Sandy?
We keep referring to a you know, whole companies, they the public right of way. Now, that line is shallow, but even if it was buried at a cre- that depth of two feet, it will still be a problem. Um we work around fiber lines and different public is on all of our construction projects. And if they're in a way of our improvement project, we can make them move. Um I don't, in my opinion, as an engineer, I, I don't believe that um a fiber line being in the way is a, is a reason to not do boulevard trees. Um you know, I think it's just a misunderstanding on the planning commission's behalf that um, you know, those utilities were most likely located within the public right of way. Uh people knew about it. Um I think the, you know, I, I don't, I don't know if the trees were in the plans and shown where the fiber line was at, but to me, we locate where fiber lines and where all the utilities are in the first place, and we know where they're at. And if they need to be moved as part of the project, then they, we make a move. So um the fiber line being behind the sidewalk or behind the curb and in front of the sidewalk, that's where they usually are located. And the depth really has no bearing on this at all because it would anyways.
Thank you. Thank you, Paul. Tad, did you have your hand up?
Well, Paul kind of clarified my thoughts. I was gonna say if the lines are improperly placed, that would be a great time to fix that with the trees going in, but apparently that's not an issue. So um it sounds like a lot of thought went into uh the placement of the trees, the reasoning behind the trees um with safety concerns. And so I guess I'd support leaving the trees where, where they um originally were designed to be at.
Thank you, Tad. Mayor Bede.
Thank you. As you guys may remember, you appointed myself to be one of the people that uh went and had the conversations with the school districts about these park lots. Uh and the thing that, that bothers me about this is that, you know, we're talking about trees as screening. That's not what this was meant for. We, we had a very long discussion about safety and about how there's data that proves that when you create a uh a calming effect with trees or or um, you know, static objects along the roadway, it tends to slow people down. We have tons of data that shows that. And that was a long conversation we had, a very long conversation that we had. Uh the reason we want these trees is because we want the kids and pedestrians of this area to be safe. And I, I don't see how now that we're this far down the road, uh we're having to look at a, ironically, a school district and say, you should have done your homework before uh accepting an offer, you know, in, in a lengthy process. If you remember the numerous meetings that we had, joint meetings on this, um it seems a little late in the game to come back now and say, oops, we didn't quite uh figure that out.
Thank you, Mayor. Alderman Pritchett?
I have a motion if you're ready.
I'm ready.
Uh I move to deny the CUP amendment request for Harrison School regarding the trees.
Second.
A motion by Pritchett is second by Bevins. Any discussion on denying the amendment request? Hearing none, I think we all got the points out. You know, I'll, I'll finally just say, it just doesn't seem the school district acted in good faith in regards to these boulevard trees or their consultants or I don't know who was, but they didn't want them the whole time. And it doesn't seem like they even gave it a, really a second look of getting it done, even though that was a condition for their permit. Jan, you had something to say?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I guess um does the city have some responsibility in the, this uh with the fact that, you know, if they're, if it, if it's being shallow is an issue, or as, as Paul said, then they move it. Did, do we as a city have some responsibility in informing the developer or the um like the, like the um, the school district? Do we have some responsibility in that?
Paul, can you answer that?
Oh, when we, for example, when we design a road project, we go out and we perform, let's call the one call, and the utility locators will come out and give you the, the horizontal location of a utility. And a lot of times, they'll give you the buried depth on a utility. And you know, we can, we can tell people where to go in the right of way. Um generally, they're choosing um where to go because our right of ways are already really packed tight with utilities and there's only a few places that new utilities can go. Um we can't, we can't judge depth with these because they're usually all horizontally directionally drilled. And so they're not open cutting these utilities. Uh we can't be out there bird dogging these guys to make sure they're two feet deep. We're just using our good faith in the utility companies that they're burying their utilities added, added that keeps their utility safe and allows for us to do improvements in the right of way. And so really, it's besides us standing there watching and making sure the utilities are buried deep enough, that's about the only way we could ever determine that.
Thank you, Paul. Does that satisfy your question, Jan?
Yes. May I ask just one more question then? I, so if you have the one call, so there's a good possibility that when they um did that, that the city co- uh the school district might have known how deep that was already long before now?
I would say, yeah. We, we generally do. Yes. That's a very correct.
Okay, okay. And there is no inspections on uh, and they don't have to call you for inspections when they lay any of these lines?
We inspect the excavations to ensure that they're restoring things to a good faith effort. So ask
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Yeah. Thank you, Paul. Any other discussion from the council on denying the amendment? Hearing none, we'll vote.
Lambert?
I am going to have to change my um direction and agree saying, no, we, I want to deny it. I want to deny the variance. I can't.
So a yes vote?
So yes. Yes, you, thank you, Kate. Thanks. Yeah.
Stunick?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes.
W Erickson?
Yes.
D Erickson? And Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries. Thank you all. Going to ten C zoning code update RFP. David Chansky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh as part of the twenty twenty budget, the city council allocated fifty thousand dollars in their CIP funds for updating the city zoning code. Uh additional fifty, an additional fifty thousand was pretty limited narrowly placed in the capital plan for consideration as part of the twenty twenty. I just timed, I'm requesting council's authorization to appeal to the CUP proposal that was attached uh for the zoning code update services. Uh the goal of this RFP earlier is to bring in a consultant to start helping guide uh the city through the update process where the planning commission, the city council, as well as other boards and commissions that would be involved uh or the zoning code effect. I'm looking at first, okay, what, what are we looking for as a final product? What items can we change, having them overview our entire code? Um and it's leading us through that step of updating. Um when the, when the city council on the third, last week on the thirteenth, start looking at goals, um even though I adopted that, some of the goals that the city council said that, yes, we want to pursue, really directly support that. Now, there was the land use section talking about the goal, saying support use development and self-integrating integration instead of separation of land uses. One of the action steps was updating the ordinances, the flexibility of the comp plan. The zoning code is the number one uh ordinance that affects the comp plan. Uh proper planning, maintaining the identity of the city in appropriate ways for it. That's the zoning code. Uh community character deserving a recovery of supporting assets. Uh talking about enforcing codes, ordinances. Um throughout this thing, even in housing and mobility and economic development, talks about um infill and development, redevelopment and how it leads us to be a more beautiful place. And really where a lot of that starts, these are zoning codes. Uh now in the last eighteen months now that I've been with the city, there's been a lot of issues that we've had to address, a lot of areas in which our current zoning code really did not reflect the community of Brainerd is in two thousand and twenty. Uh our desires to Our desire is to fill this RFP, get qualified consultants to respond, start reviewing them, get someone on board for this year, spend some of the money to budget it. But also by getting these RFP responses hopefully in mid-August allows us to properly budget on the budget we need in 2021. Allows us to properly budget and we're not just putting a guess out there. If we don't need $50,000, let's not budget $50,000. We know exactly what we need and we can set a plan for it.
Okay, thank you, David. I have one question before we have a motion. When we talked about our council goals, I think the updating the code, the zoning code was a three to five year kind of priority. Is there something a higher priority that we could spend that $100,000 on? Or do you, you think it's the right call? As far as all of the things that touch the building, the community development department, do you think this would be the right time to spend this money, even though we did higher prioritize other things?
Mr. President, I do. I do think at this point, really everything kind of, in some way or another comes back, I feel, to the zoning code. When you look at everything from the Dickinson development, the school district, got some requests, some other inquiries about different types of developments that people want to do. Ultimately, it always comes back to the zoning code. And that's why I really think this is, this is the time and the way to start.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, this is Lambert. I will make a motion, okay. I will make a, a motion to authorize staff to field the request for, request for proposals and qualifications to the zoning code update services. And I so move.
Second.
Motion by Lambert, a second by Pritchett. Is there any discussion? Hearing none will vote by roll call.
Lambert.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Bevins.
Yes.
W Erickson. T Erickson.
Yes.
Ann Johnson.
Yes, that motion carries. That brings us to the next item on our agenda, which is the public forum. This is time allocated for citizens to bring matters not on the agenda to the attention of the council. Time limits may be imposed. Let me unmute the muted call in users. And if you are called in to speak at public forum, please state your name and address. If you're here for public forum, please state your name and address. If you're here for public forum, please state your name and address. Hearing no names or addresses, I will close the public forum and we will move on to 12 staff reports, city administrator.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. I have a couple of things to draw your attention to. First of all, on the goals, we are working on compiling those goals that were negotiated or decided at the July 13th goal session. That will be on the August 3rd city council agenda. The CARES Act funding, I know it's been discussed a couple of times here tonight. We also plan to have a recommendation to city council on the August 3rd meeting. Our recommendation really is going to be in three different categories. One are the COVID-19 expenses that we have spent to date. Any anticipated COVID costs that we have from now until November 15th. And then that third bucket is the amount available for small businesses, nonprofits and our residents. We will be meeting with Mary Reedy and we are also from Clifton, Larson Allen. We also had a meeting today to talk about, or met with the city of Baxter in Crow Wing County to see what they're doing with their CARE Act funds. And we do have a follow-up meeting on July, July 23rd. So I don't, Paul's hand up, so maybe he has something.
Paul, is yours the engineer report or related to the administrator's report?
No, I was just on staff reports, sorry.
Okay. Jennifer, anything else for city administrator's report?
Yep, just a couple of, a couple of things. Opening of city hall, I know we talked about that a little bit in the preparedness plan. Midwest security did get our door releases opened or installed. We now also, Sean is prepared to install the ring. We have those ready to go. And so our recommendation to council is going to be to prepare to open a week from today to the public. We are, as a staff, going to take half of Friday to really finish putting city hall back together. And then I think we will be prepared to open to the public on Monday, July 27.
Question?
Yep.
I was just wondering if you knew when the front stairs were going to be finished?
Paul?
That's going to be Paul's main thing.
Yeah, that was, that was what I was going to report on.
Okay, I'll do your thing.
Anything else, Jennifer?
Yep, I have, sorry, two more things. I just wanted to give you an update on the, the dangerous dog designation that was made at the previous dangerous dog. I just wanted to share with you that the owner, all of the requirements and Attorney Langle did send them out on July 17th. Know that the insurance that they had did comply with the requirements that the council put forth. And then last, but certainly not least, I wanted to talk a little bit about, we have been receiving some complaints on a independent contract employee that we have. And I've asked Attorney Langle about a cost of an investigation. Since we're getting multiple complaints about a contract employee, I think the city has a responsibility to do an investigation into that. Attorney Langle has given us an estimated cost of about $3,500 to do that investigation. And that would be conducted by Tim Sullivan, who is another attorney at Ratwick. So with that, Mr. President, I, I would appreciate a, a motion so that we could move forward. I just want to be aware that there will be a cost to an investigation.
Alderman Pritchett.
I move to approve.
Lambert.
We have a motion from Pritchett, a second from Lambert to approve the cost of the investigation. Any discussion? Hearing none will vote.
Lambert.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Bevins.
Yes.
W Erickson.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Ann Johnson.
Yes, motion carries.
That is the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Paul, you get to go next.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. So in regards to the front steps, the, the previous motion, the last council meeting, what we come back in two weeks after further investigation and some time and materials work as far as the staircase. Brado Brothers did come in this week. They began excavating the staircase and getting down to a foundation that we felt was solid. WSN structural engineer came by. We did some analysis after they took down the staircase. However, by the time we got to a point where the packet was due and ready to go here this week, we weren't able to get information over back to Brado Brothers to give us pricing. So we are, WSN is still working on a few drawings to give to Brado Brothers. With the council motion the last time of providing a, a concrete tread and a granite riser. Are still working on that. We just needed to ensure that the structural support underneath the staircase was sufficient and what kind of engineered fill that needs to be provided to ensure proper freeze thaw cycles and things that they don't affect the staircase. So I apologize for not getting that on this agenda. We tried our best to get Brado in there to do the investigation and get WSN to do the drawings. But two weeks wasn't quite enough. So we plan on having that on August 3rd with more refined scope drawings and an updated cost that's more accurate to what we're seeing, so.
Thank you, Paul. Any other staff reports?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
It's got two things, Mr. President. First is the last meeting, I said I'd be making a video presentation to the council, the community development department. That is still the plan, just looking at the agenda. And then with the audio presentation, and then Paul has an upcoming presentation as well. We decided we're going to spread out those presentations for the next meeting. So that'll be coming in August. I just wanted to let, update the council on that. And then the last thing I have is that the Region 5 Children's Union Task Force did have its first meeting last week. As well as with Mayor Beddow, as well as Councilwoman Lambert. I think that the initial meeting went well and there'll be another meeting coming up in August. And then as soon as this happens, each month moving forward, we can hear more about that coming up. This first meeting was really this kind of discussing, bringing the task force up to speed on what was, kind of how we got here. And then just kind of discussing initial thoughts about Lum Park and what people see as kind of the future of Lum Park. In the future, we will get more into the nitty gritty about the planning.
Thank you, David. Anything from Connie or? You didn't have a corky here tonight or a tin. No other staff reports, that'll bring it to the mayor's report.
All right. Yeah, just that. That one's not me. I cannot, anyway. Got to learn to wait for my cue. Yeah, just to reiterate about the Lum Park Master Plan group that has been put in place that we did meet. And that was a good first meeting. I think everybody has a, a good grasp on the history of that park and the beauty and features that it currently has. So I think when we came out of there, very positive, that is one of our best parks. And I was very appreciative to hear all the members of Lum Park believes that to be the case. The other thing I just want to say super fast is that from my other hat at Brings Community Action, I just want to thank everyone for the Fourth of July. I know I missed the last meeting, so I couldn't give that praise out to our community. But it was fantastic. It went very well and I was amazed at how well the citizens of Brainerd and the community were in terms of abiding by the restrictions that we had to put in place. I know that wasn't the best possible thing ever, but I'll tell you what, we shot those fireworks off as high as we possibly could and we got great feedback on that. So as long as I'm in charge of shooting them babies off, they're going way up, high as can be as big as possible. That's the end of the mayor's report.
Thank you. Council member reports, we'll start with Alderman Pritchett.
I have nothing to report.
Alderman Bevins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a bit of good news. Initially, the Parks and Rec had canceled the summer concert series, the Bandstand Series that the senior center puts on due to the coronavirus. But last Thursday, it was reopened. The senior center presented a five-piece jazz band. I apologize, I don't remember the name. It was Greg Green and Chris Fogdrood and that group. This year's series is sponsored by the Mills family in remembrance of Helen Mills, and it was awesome. The only question that remains unanswered is whether in the crowd, there was more face masks or walkers. But that's to be determined. It was awesome.
Thank you, Alderman Bevins, Alderman Stunek.
I have nothing tonight.
Alderman and Tad Erickson.
Nothing to report tonight.
Alderman Wayne Erickson.
Nothing.
Thank you. And I have one. I have a one thing to report. I, I didn't want to have to report it, but the mayor dropped the ball. If you want to support the water tower, you can head down to Visit Brainerd, downtown Brainerd, and they are selling keychains, t-shirts, cribbage boards, all the water tower gear you can handle for sale at Visit Brainerd. Move on down there and support the water tower. And with that, it looks like a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chair.
Jan, I forgot about you. You're a call in user, Jan. Jan.
I just want to reiterate what the mayor said and David had said. But I also want to add to the fact that we are, this month, we are going to be having some open houses. One is after hours on the 27th or 28th, you guys. And so we are starting also with the community input. Just want to let you know. So we are really getting well routed in this first month. Thank you.
For the update, Jan, and sorry, I didn't recognize you by in that telephone avatar.
Yeah, you didn't see the black cat going across my screen. So thank you, guys.
Thank you. Take a motion to adjourn.
So.
Lambert, second, Lambert.
Moved by Pritchett, second by Lambert. Let's vote.
Lambert.
Yes.
Stunek.
Okay.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Bevins.
Yes.
W Erickson.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Ann Johnson.
Yes, motion carries, we're adjourned. Thank you all.
Bye-bye.